I'd like to call this August 20th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Mr. Onagnastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
All present, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our district goals. We continue to have our three main goals. Student achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And it certainly goes without saying that those goals are being challenged all the time, and we will address them. Next is public comment. I don't see any public comment. Is there any public comment from the audience? Hearing none. Dr. Reiba, do we have any recognition?
None tonight.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. The July 13th and July 29th Regular Board of Education meetings. All district video and audio recordings are permanent part of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Mr. Onagnastu?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And I now turn it over to Mr. Onagnastu for his treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Before I get to the items on my agenda, I just wanted to update the board and the community on some exciting news in the finance department, finance world, district finances. So if you recall back in June, the board adopted a resolution to refund or refinance 58.5 million of the district's outstanding debt that was from the $81 million debt issue. That refunding took place Tuesday. And before I tell you the results of that, prior to, as part of the refunding process, the district had a review with a rating agency, Moody's. In order, before we go out to market, it kind of rates the district and puts a rating on there for prospective investors. Our current rating was a AA2. After a review with Moody's, the credit agency, they confirmed our AA2 rating, but also added a positive outlook to the district. So we didn't get upgraded completely, but it was, we ended up in a better spot than we went going into it with the positive outlook, especially in this, the economic environment that we're in now. And that's a testament to everyone involved that's been with the school district, and then also the community. With the passage of the levy, that definitely helped our outlook for the credit agency. So that was two weeks ago, and then this week we had the bond refunding. We went going into it, we estimated our savings to be about 10.5 million, or 17.85% of the bond issue represents present value savings. Overall, we ended up actually having a $19.8 million savings with the bonds extended 2045. That 19.8 is not the present value. The present value of that $19 million savings is 15.8 million. The district did contribute 1.3 million of its bond retirement fund, so it's part of the savings, but from actually going to market, the district saved 14.5 million in present value, of present value savings, or 24.7%. So from the 10.5 that we estimated in June, it went up to the 14.5, or 24.7. So that was more than we had ever thought going into this. We started looking at this last year, and last year, the savings at that time when we started the process was 8 million. So to end up where we ended up is probably, it was huge. And then how that translates to the taxpayers. So on average, the average annual savings is about 800,000. So that's $800,000 less we would need to collect in taxes to pay back the debt. That 800,000 annually is about 0.5 mil, a half a mil. And how that translates, it's about $17.50 for a $100,000 house. The savings will go in effect, starting in a couple of years. It's going to be a gradual effect. This year, we were able to lower the millage rate from 3 to 2.8. Next year, we should be able to lower it to 2.6 and 2.4, and get it all the way down to 2.3. So it'll be a half mil reduction by 2024.
So I just wanted to compliment specifically George and the entire team. You're always very modest. When I tell you congratulations, you always remind me that it was the entire team. And that's not just the treasurer's department, but it's the entire school district, all working in the same direction for the benefit of the taxpayer. I do want to highlight that a AA2 with a positive outlook. We were AA2 prior, but for Moody's to come out in this environment and say, "We're going to maintain your rating of AA2, and we're going to give you a positive outlook", you know, if it's a school analogy, it'd be like going from an A- to an A. And in addition to that, in their analysis, they said that they fully expect that if the school district maintains the trajectory it's on, they would be upgrading us the next time it's time to be rated by Moody's. And again, I think that's significant in this environment. When we were on the call, the analyst indicated there are very few public entities, cities, school districts, what have you, that are maintaining, let alone going up a little bit. And so I think it's a validation of the financial prudence that we've stressed and harped on for a number of years, and it's good to hear. And it does bear real rewards. I mean, 17.50 per 100,000 for the next 25 years turns into real money. So that's, you know, I would much rather our taxpayers keep that money than it go to, you know, the different institutional investors. So congratulations. I think that's a great job.
Thanks. So moving on with the items on the agenda. Item A, which is Exhibit B, is the financial report for the month ending June 30th, 2020. Item B, which can be found in Exhibit B, the financial report for the month ending July 31st, 2020. Exhibit C is an invoice order approval for an after-the-fact invoices for Dude Solutions, which was dated, the purchase order was dated 7/27, and the amount was $4,274.55, which had an invoice date of 7/1/2020. And then moving on to Item D, the Strong's Early Learning Preschool Tuition. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the district sets tuition for the 2020-2021 Early Learning Preschool at a daily rate of $8.88, which is calculated based from the annual amount of 1,260 days divided over 142 school days to be billed at a daily rate for actual days the district provides in-person in-building learning. It is further recommended that the treasurer be charged with collecting tuition, which would be billed monthly at a daily rate for in-person building learning. The $140 deposit for tuition will be applied toward the final payment of the school year with any overpayment credit to the student's account or refunded at the parent's guardian's request.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? You're good?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, would you take the role?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And again, I'll just highlight that this is part of our framework to, you know, when we are providing services that have fees, we'll charge them. But recognizing that in a remote 2.0 environment, it'd be a little difficult to try to track those fees, we won't be charging them.
Item E, the full-day kindergarten tuition. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the district sets tuition for the 2021-2021 full-day kindergarten at a daily rate of $14.05, which is calculated based from the annual amount of $2,500 divided over 178 school days to be billed at a daily rate for actual days the district provides in-person in-building learning. Students qualifying for free lunch will receive a $200 reduction of the annual tuition amount, and students qualifying for reduced lunch will receive a $100 reduction of the annual tuition amount, which will be applied to the daily rate. It is further recommended that the treasurer be charged with collecting tuition. Parents' guardians will be invoiced monthly at a daily rate for days of the in-person in-building learning estimated in advance of school days attended. The $300 deposit will be applied toward the final payment of the school year with an overpayment credit to the student's account or refunded at the parent's/guardian's request.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George, can you repeat the daily rate?
The daily rate is $14.05.
And the annual amount?
$2,500. Again, that's taken half of the kindergarten cost. To get the annual amount, we take half of the cost of the full-day kindergarten of the personnel cost.
And again, this is the same framework as before. We do have quite a bit of change going on, and it's understandable. Parents are trying to figure out what's in their best interest and what's in their students' best interest. And, you know, full-day kindergarten in a remote environment probably has a lot of parents scratching their heads. So this is understandable. Again, our goal is to have our students back in-person with the teachers. So hopefully, this will take care of itself. Any other discussion or any other questions? You can take the role.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Anything else on your report?
No, that concludes my report. If there's no further questions.
Dr. Reiba, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Couple items that we need to discuss and one to vote on today. So I wanted to give an update to everybody, our parents and community and staff, as well as the board, on where we're at with the school restart plan. So we spent a lot of time over the last couple of meetings talking about it. So I've got a handful of updates. We'll talk about athletics, you know, where we're at with athletics and marching band. We'll talk about transportation. We'll talk about, you know, our district restart plan outside of the recommendation. And what remote 2.0 is going to look like for students as we start the school year in the upcoming week. So maybe we know that Cuyahoga County has been rated orange, right? So it moved up, so that's great news. We're moving in the right direction. I did want to share clearly with our community that that does not change our plan at this point in time. We made the decision to start in remote learning 2.0 based on the Board of Health's recommendation. We spent a lot of time last meeting discussing that, and that recommendation is still there. If you remember from the slides from last time, they had four points on those slides. One of them was that they wanted to see a decline in the case rate over the last, at least for four weeks. I think the Board of Health data comes out tomorrow. So it's been at least three weeks in a row that they've declined. And we'll see what tomorrow's data sets. We're trending in the right direction there. They said they wanted to see the county in orange for a number of weeks, for multiple weeks. So this is the first week we're in orange, so we're trending in the good direction there. They wanted a positivity rate as less than 5%. The data I saw was from August 14th, and it was at exactly 5%. So tomorrow, we should get a new number to see if we're less or we're trending there. So all of those data points, we're in a good spot. We're really trending well for our shared goal of getting our kids back for in-person in-building learning. The last piece of it, really, we can't control, and that's the availability of tests, COVID testing for children. And so tomorrow, as is the case every Friday, our Cuyahoga County superintendents will be on a call with our Board of Health, so we'll be interested in getting some updates. But I just wanted to be clear that we are still starting in remote 2.0. But the way things are trending, we talked about last time, plan for the quarter, but if we can come back sooner, we will, based on the environment. And so far, things are looking like that may be the case. But what we don't want to have happen is we don't want to go too early and then things go awry, and we're flipping people back, kids and parents, back and forth. So we want to be confident that we're in a stable ground before we move forward. But we're optimistic that that should be sooner than later. So with that, let's talk about extracurriculars and athletics. So on July 31st, as we know, the Board of Health put out a series of recommendations, one about school, starting remotely, and we adopted that recommendation last meeting, and one about athletics and extracurriculars. And what they said is that extracurriculars and athletics, including band and theater and choir, should be discontinued during periods of remote learning. So that was their recommendation. It was a precautionary recommendation based on all of the factors we just talked about. Positivity rates, prevalence rates, spread, things of that nature. So just like last time, I wanted to share with the board and our community kind of what we've been reflecting on, what we've been looking at. I spent a lot of time, Bill Wengler, our principal at the high school is here tonight. I'm going to bring him up here in a little bit. But we spent a lot of time talking, and Ms. Boydham at the middle school, Denny Ziegler, athletic director is here. So what we took into consideration is that a couple of days ago, I've lost track of my day. So Tuesday, the governor announced publicly that they and the Ohio Department of Health approved an order saying all sports can continue. Non-contact, contact sports can continue. So they did that publicly, and then the governor and lieutenant governor throughout the evening held conference calls with superintendents, which I was able to take part of. Bill and Denny were on the athletic director, principal one, and then they held one for coaches as well. Contact sport coaches and non-contact sport coaches. So the state has said, "We feel comfortable. You can go ahead and have sports, all sports, as long as you follow these standards that we've set", and those standards have been publicly put to writing and shared last night. The Board of Health said, you know, that "We're giving this recommendation, but we're supportive of local school districts allowing these activities as long as you adhere to the state guidelines." And so finally, you know, locally, you know, within our school district, you know, one of the things that we took a look at is, okay, when we take a look at schools, it's seven and a half hours a day, it's inside, it's thousands of kids or hundreds of kids for extended periods of time. We feel we need to take a really precautious approach to that at this point in time with where we're at with the spread and prevalence of COVID. We still want to take a cautious approach, but when you have much fewer numbers of athletes or musicians, besides volleyball, you're outside. We've been working through these precautions and guidelines since July, right? Since early July, we've adhered to those. We've had a good success rate. That needs to be factored into our decision. And so I'm recommending to the board tonight that we continue to allow athletics and marching band to move forward, and we adhere to all of the required health and safety standards as we have. In addition, the Ohio Department of Health and the Board of Health, you know, OHSAA has been sending out their guidelines. And then obviously, Bill and Denny have been working with our Athletic Conference, which is the Greater Cleveland Conference, to look at how are we going to adhere to these standards and what does that mean locally for our conference. So I'll pause here for a second. That's my recommendation, is that we continue on. We adhere to these standards. We let our kids have their season. We let them play. We let them, you know, have their marching band season because we can feel there's risk, right? There's always going to be risk. We have a pandemic. But we feel, based on the safety standards we have, that we're able to keep our kids safe and healthy within these standards, understanding the risks that are there. So before I have Bill come up and talk about what this looks like for each sport, I wanted to see if there was any feedback or questions or comments from the board.
So to that, we've publicly stated it. You have board consensus to support the decision to move forward, and the rest of the meeting will go over some of the details, et cetera. I do want to, I just want to add my opinion or my comment. I think at this stage of the pandemic, that phrase, "We're going to have to learn to live with COVID-19", is becoming more and more prevalent. And for our understanding, it's being very cautious, but I don't want to call them experiments, but ultimately, we will go down this path, and it's a controlled path. It's not the entire school. We've heard, we've all heard vocally from parents that are very vested in wanting to have this opportunity. So we're going to try it, and we're going to be intelligent about it. And I think a lot of the restrictions or the protections that are in place are part of that response. And then we'll be able to see. And if everything works the way we want, we can then continue down that path and learn to live with it. So I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. And just for clarity, because I know this was a point of question last time, because you just stated the board has consensus, there does not need to be a vote. So we are moving forward with athletics as planned and as per schedule, just for clarity for our community. So I'm going to ask our high school principal, Bill Wengler, to come up, and he's going to walk us through, he's not going to walk us through all the safety standards, right? We've got, there's a lot of details in that. Denny and the coaches and Bill have been working on that. But we want to talk, what does this mean for our student athletes? What does this mean for our parents? And how are things going to maybe look a little differently as we move into this fall sports season? So Bill, I know we're going to start with football.
So we started developing numbers for football, and we kind of, Denny and I have spent a lot of time getting to know each other since July 1st over sports. And we predicted that the governor would say 15 to 20%. That's what we were assuming, and he said 15%. So we came up with a formula that honestly is now kind of being, the rest of the schools in our conference are emulating, that we're going to do four tickets per player, home and away. Four tickets for, and I will explain the band. So the band is going to play at halftime, but only 50 of the band members. Partly because that's what he's been, Mr. King has been practicing in groups of 50, so he's already got his groups prepared. The other part is so that every kid can get at least one halftime show, but all of the kids can also perform the whole band at 6 o'clock. We want our band parents to experience every football game at home. So there'll be two different groups of the band. But when you add up between the cheerleaders, the pep band, the football players, that puts us at about 840 spectators. That does not include coaches' families, which would add, if we allow the same number for coaches, their families to come, puts us at about 900. Now, the cap, based on what the governor said in the last couple of days, is about 1,200. But there were some good points in that conference call, like if scouts want to come to see a player. If we get too close to that 1,200, that would put us in a position, if a scout calls Denny and says, "I want to see this young man play football", we're not going to be able to let him in. So this gives us a little bit of wiggle room for special circumstances.
And Bill, just to add to that, the governor in the call was very clear that this is for family members and folks that are in a quarantined or household. So the big change is going to be our community member that just loves football and wants to come see our kids play. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, and one of the ways we're doing the fourth, so this is going to be a little bit difficult to completely regulate. However, if each player gets four tickets for mom, dad, whoever they want to bring, if they're a split family, that allows multiple to come together. The four that come together have to sit together. We are going to social distance in the stands, and we'll have it marked off so that when you come, for example, if the Wengler family comes to the football game, because I have all daughters, but if I had a son playing football and we all went, we would be together. If I chose to bring one of their girlfriends or someone, a grandparent, they're all going to be together. Those four will be in a box, basically, and they will be socially distanced from everybody else. But this allows for each player, because you know, as a parent of two athletes here at the high school, I want to make sure that families get to experience as much as they possibly can of their son or daughter's, sons, in this case, sons', senior football season. But this allows pretty much most family members to attend. And as I think we're going to add a little bit here, if you have a family member who's immunocompromised and just can't be there, it doesn't matter how few people are there, we are going to try to livestream the football game so that even if you had a ticket for them, but they have to stay home, they'll be able to see the show as well, the game. So yeah, I kind of talked about this. The entire marching band will go at 6:00. We'll get them out of there. That gets them out by about 6:25, we're guessing, we're hoping. That gives the football team enough time to warm up a little bit. And because of the small crowd, we're going to recommend to people, don't, you know, to show up closer to, say, 6:40 and get them into the, and Denny and I have worked on the visiting fans, and the home fans will enter and exit through different locations so that we can make it smoother, more efficient, and we're not intermingling crowds from different areas because our conference stretches over such a large area. And as everything, everyone's going to be wearing masks. We're going to follow the safety protocol to make sure that everybody is safe. And there will be no concessions. Now, I actually asked Denny to come, and when we're done with all of the sports, I want to link the concessions. We, Denny had a great idea that we've been working with some of the different booster groups on how to get the fundraising dollars in. They were looking at selling like bagged popcorn, pre-bagged. I don't think they would have raised very much money based on the size of the crowd, but Denny came up with a really good plan, and because it was all his, I'm going to, at the end, I'm going to ask him to kind of explain it to you because it can cross over to all of the sports. So volleyball, this was probably the toughest one. So we have four tickets per player. Denny and I pulled all the bleachers out in every gym, and we measured, and we counted seats because of the indoor component. We want to be very cautious here. So we came up with 12 players on each team, four tickets per player, 96 total spectators, which we can social distance with ease. It's not a big issue. The biggest issue with volleyball is that the freshman JV varsity follow right after each other. There's not a lot of time between those games. So if you've ever, you know, if you've been to a volleyball game, of course, the kids are all congregating afterward. The teams want to support each other. So what we came up with is we're going to play the freshman games in the back gym, gym three. They are going to finish their game, and they're going to leave at that exit back by the athletic office. They will not have the opportunity to crisscross families, crisscross athletes. And then same thing for the JV game. When the JV team is done, they're going to go out the back gym doors and exit by the athletic office. And then the varsity will come in a totally different exit, entrance. So, and that's going to take a little bit of work, but I think we can keep it so that there's no crisscrossing of crowds. We maintain that 96 total spectators without any real safety issues. So soccer, so what we did with soccer is, soccer and tennis both, we spray painted boxes on the field, basically, big white boxes. And what we're telling people, you get four spectators, you have to stay inside your box. So we've already had tennis matches where Denny and I both were at the home tennis match watching this in action. It was very effective. We did realize after the first match, we need to put more boxes in the shade and paint less in the sun. But I think, so what we did is a couple layered boxes in the shade. Parents were very, if they left those boxes, we were both monitoring. Every parent had a mask on outside the box traveling to and from. And the soccer game match, we've got the boxes set up all around the soccer field. Now, at the stadium, those soccer games are going to be much easier, obviously. But we have the boxes set up so that we can socially distance all of the fans, and again, they can bring four family members to every event. Same thing with tennis. Cross country, a little bit different. This is a little bit of a challenge, and I have two on the girls' team, so it's personal for me. We have pared our races down, so the home invite that we have is really our big issue. Typically, that's between 20, 25, almost, I think we've peaked about 30 teams. 10 per varsity, you get the idea. And Division One, you get very large open races, JV races. What we've done, working with Nappick, Coach Nappick, Coach Saroni, is we're going to limit it to eight teams or less per race. We're going to have a varsity and two JV races to break the groups up. And then we're going to separate those two sets of races so that the A group is long gone before the B group starts running. We're moving our middle school, which is the same day. They're going to run theirs at Albion that day, which is their home course anyway. This will allow, again, four spectators. This will be one of the tougher things to enforce. People like to congregate at that entrance in the stadium because that's the best spot to watch your child run in. That, Denny and I, obviously, I'll be there, and Denny will be there, and we'll be making sure that if the spectators are spread out, we will also sure that, that if the, the spectators are spread out, we will also be putting as much of the race as we can up on the screen, so you can get a glimpse of your, of your athlete And then, the other big invites, several of the big invites have canceled. Some of them, like Tiffin, Tiffin has, if you guys ever, anyone knows cross country, Tiffin has a lot of kids. They've canceled. Couple of our meets have canceled. We are replacing those with duels, tries, or quads, meaning two, three, or four teams. These will allow, A, we'll have more home meets, which is kinda fun, more exciting for some of our, our people, 'cause if, those of you who know cross country, you have to drive forever to get there, usually it's several hours away. So, we're gonna have more home meets, it'll be more intra-conference meets, but they will be safe numbers. The races should not have more than seventy to eighty kids in them each, which is half of what OHSA is recommending. And golf, good old golf, continue as normal. Social, the ultimate socially distanced sport.
So, I think that gets us through all of our fall sports and how that would impact parents, and I know you wanted to maybe bring Denny up.
I did. This, uh, this idea that we've kinda been developing and working with some of our local, local, the community vendors, I think is something that, that I want him to explain a little more about, 'cause he's worked pretty hard on it.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Wengler. Thank you guys very much for letting me explain this the best I can, all right now. So, when we were in the talks of, should we allow, you know, the band to run their normal concession stand, and what would that look like, and the guidance, and then in my mind, I started picturing, well, if we have people running to the restrooms, and we have people getting food, and it's six feet apart, that it's just gonna be a mad, mad rush there. So, when I met with the band boosters with Bill on Monday night, I threw out the idea of, we have such very good community partners, that why don't we reach out to them and say, "Hey, on Friday nights, if we can offer something for our fans, as well as community, as well as our visiting fans, if you stop at, you know, at such and such a place before and/or after the game, they might offer discounts, as well as give back something to the band boosters." That idea resonated very well. I can say right now, we have about eight or nine, nine, I think, partners that have agreed to this, and some of them are doing multiple days. So, what we looked at is how can we incorporate not only Friday night football, but Saturday morning JV football, Saturday morning cross country, Saturday morning soccer perhaps, Saturday morning golf, tennis. So, a lot of the partners are willing to give as much as twenty percent back to the boosters for the local, you know, for us visiting them. I know right now, we have Peace Love &amp; Donuts, I just spoke to him on my way in here, they are gonna do eight to three Fridays and eight to three Saturdays, and they're gonna give fifteen percent back. Canes is gonna do, I think, from three to close on all of our home Friday games, and they're gonna give fifteen percent back. Dairy Queen is gonna do three to close, and they're gonna give twenty percent back. So, this is a way for us to help the band booster support what they're losing from the concession, and I also think that this is something that is, that can positively carry over into winter sports and even spring sports, as we continue the partnerships with our local businesses. There's even a lot of businesses that have said, "Hey, if we can do this, we'll do it every Friday, even on away games," knowing that our fans are gonna be limited going to those away games, and that the conference has a, I guess, recommendation right now that all home teams livestream games. So, as I looked at that, I said, "Well, if we're gonna livestream every game, what better way than a family to go and maybe get Gina's pizza and watch the game live?" And not only are they watching the game, but they're also supporting the band boosters with the, you know, the kickback that we would be getting from those pizza places, or from Canes, or from whoever wants to get involved with this. So, from a concession standpoint, that's where we're at. I also told them, I think, with our limited capacity, as Mr. Wengler said, I, I think the revenue generation from this is gonna be a lot greater than what they would do from, you know, six hundred fans at a game, and of those six hundred fans, maybe three hundred buy something, and if it's only limited to popcorn and pop and water, I don't know how much they truly would've made, and they probably would've spent a whole lot more. So, I like this idea. I think it's gonna help us, and I also think that it's gonna build a lot more future partnerships with the community.
Thank you, Denny.
So, thanks.
Hey, Denny.
Yes.
A great idea, good creativity. Hopefully, I see Mr. Car, or Councilman Carbone, and he can take it back to city council, 'cause I think it, it does a nice piggyback. You know, we're, we're all aware that restaurants, not just in our community, but throughout, are struggling. All of those kinds of small businesses are struggling, so this is an opportunity for us to hopefully benefit ourselves, but benefit those, those small businesses in our community. So, I think that's a great idea. And, and it also lets us, you know, I was gonna say, all the things we're doing, we're making compromises. I mean, we've been watching the governor for the last month, and I, I know, I know it hit, at that level, they're struggling with, you know, we wanna allow sports to continue, we wanna allow that to happen, but we, we're aware of all the serious risks. So, how do we make those compromises? And looking at some of those restrictions, et cetera, I'm not, you know, anybody can have their opinion, but what I would hope is, is at the end of the day, we recognize this is the price of admission to, to have these sports right now. And so, you know, if you wanna argue the diminished capacity, or you wanna argue concessions or whatever, I'm gonna do whatever it takes to give our students the opportunities. And I think it's great when we can be creative and say, "How do we, how do we still have that Friday night feel, knowing that we, we can't do it the way we want to?" So, being able to support a Canes, I'm sure the dry, I'm sure the cars will be roped around Pearl, but that, you know, right now, I think everybody will be happy to have cars, cars roped around Pearl going to Canes, knowing that our, our students that play band, knowing that our students that play football or soccer or whatever are getting an opportunity, and we're gonna cross our fingers, and, and also gonna do things to try to make that as safe as possible. And hopefully, it'll be successful, and we can, and we can continue with it, and then, you know, try the next step, and try the next step, and, and like I said before, learn to live with it. But what I really wanted to ask you is, is we need a golf update. How is the team doing?
Golf? So, we have some very talented, some very talented golfers. We have a couple freshmen boys and, and one girl that's won, so our girls' team won the last GCC tournament, which was held, I believe, on Tuesday. Natalie Kostolnik is outstanding. I don't think she's shot over a seventy-five this year, which is fantastic for a freshman, especially. And then we have a state qualifier that's back for our golf team, and Michael Lee. We added a freshman that, right now, score-wise, is shooting a little bit better than him. So, we have a very talented golf program for the next four years. It's, I, I selfishly have said, "I want fall sports to happen," because I know what a great group of athletes we have this fall. I think in our last ranking, the girls' soccer team is ranked second in the country right now, so I selfishly want this to happen for them. So, yes.
I have a question. Um, for soccer, you were just talking about, are, if you're visitors, can visitors come to the soccer games?
Yes, so we are allowing four tickets for visitors, as well as home, for all sports.
Do you know if other GCC schools are allowing visitors to their?
They are. The question that we had today on our conference call is, what's that number? Because like, for instance, when our soccer team goes to Euclid with their capacity at their soccer stadium, it's only fifty fans. So, we are looking to move that to their old, their old football stadium to allow us more fans, and they, they are willing to work with us. That number for our other conference schools might be two per, two per athlete, it might be four, just depending on whose school and what venue it's at. I know for like Solon, they're allowing their whole band, they only have seven hundred seats available with their social distancing, their band is gonna take a four hundred and fifty-two. So, that's really gonna limit the amount of home fans for them, as well as visiting fans, and that's something that we are working through with our conference schools when we play them, and say, "Hey, listen, you know, I know that you said that it's, it's a minimum of two hundred seats, are we able to bring more?" You know, so, it's gonna be a school-by-school and a game-by-game basis, but for here, any conference school, any non-league school that is coming, it's gonna be four tickets per student athlete, and we have marked it off in every venue we have, Foltz, the stadium, our gym, and we can easily do that.
Is, uh, Solon having sports now, or?
Uh, Solon right now is starting back up golf and tennis on Monday. They're hoping to start up all of the other contact sports within two weeks.
Denny, a quick question. One, I think the idea with the restaurants is fantastic, and I will personally be taking advantage of the Peace Love &amp; Donuts one. But with the concessions not being open, are, are fans gonna be allowed to bring food or drink or anything into the, the stadium during the contests?
That's something we haven't really talked about. I don't have an issue with them bringing in water or bottles of pop. I would refrain from bringing in coolers, because I don't wanna have to check every single person coming in there with coolers. But I'm sure that that's something that we'll talk about, you know, as we evolve this for next week for our first football game. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I, we, we have had some conversations. I'm inclined to not, I, I think water is going, I, I think that opens up some issues with having people bringing in things that we can't regulate. You know, I would be inclined to say a sealed water bottle, and, and then selfishly, if we want them to go get Canes, I don't want them to bring in something that's not kick, supporting our band, and not go through that wraparound drive-through. Or, you know, in my case, I'll be probably going to Dairy Queen, 'cause that's my weakness. So, I would say, at this point, like, my thoughts, and we haven't talked a ton about it, but I, I'm thinking just water bottles, water's something we have to let people bring. But I would be inclined, 'cause then you're gonna see people showing up with a, with a pizza, and we want them to get pizza from our sponsors.
And again, I think that's reasonable. You know, the, and I'm, I'm gonna repeat it, we're just, we're working through this, and there aren't gonna be perfect answers, and, you know, the answer for, for the first month might change as we learn more and get better at things.
The music boosters, and we've, Denny and I have been in quite a few meetings with them, they all love the idea, both financially, and, and they were really struggling with how do we get this food out and not create an unsafe environment. So, they, pretty much a hundred percent are all on board with the idea.
Are middle school sports working on the same guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Within, again, with the, with middle school, we do have to make sure that fifteen percent, it's a different size, but at the minimum, here's, here's what we're doing with middle school. If it's for foot, home football, the difference will come out of the away, not the home. So, if they get two per, kinda like what Solon's doing, you know, they're taking out their extra, Solon's choosing to bring their whole band, they're not performing, they're just gonna sit there and watch, which I, I don't agree with, but they're taking seats away from the visitors to do it. At our middle school football games, our, our families will get four seats, possibly less for the visitors, depending on the space.
And then when the marching band plays at six o'clock, will parents be able to come in and watch that, the marching band?
They will, same deal, four tickets, socially distanced. And, and, and again, Denny, we'll have all the administrators there, we'll try to, that will be a very quick, you know, it, it will be a little messy, but I, I have, you know, I feel for our, our band families there's. You know, the season went from ten to six, three home games. You know, Denny and I even floated an idea of having them playing at the halftime of the away games and livestreaming it. We don't know if we could make that happen, but we're, we're, we're still trying to be creative to give our band parents as much of the experience that, that they deserve.
And so, I'd like to add a couple clarifying, you know, about the, the marching band. So, Bill has, has been sharing, there's so many details to all of these decisions, and so many secondary details. So, just for clarity, the governor stated that bands are not gonna travel, you know, so, and, you know, the, the league made that decision, right, that bands are not gonna travel, so, you know, that, that gets us down to three home games. Halftime, they've also said that locker rooms are not gonna be able to be utilized. Halftime's are gonna be a little bit shorter.
Ten minutes.
So, they're gonna be shorter, teams are gonna be at the end, so the idea of why can't the band perform at the halftime, it's a little different scenario than normal. They've also limited that we can only have sixty football players on the field at a time. So, in terms of having some equity between the groups, you know, we have a hundred and fifty band members, putting fifty band members at a time works. The other thing that I just wanted to point out and be clear, if you, if you pay attention to all the details Bill and Denny have shared, that also means there's no longer student sections at any games. So, I know that's disappointing for all of our kids, whether it's Friday night football or soccer, or cross country, or supporting, they have to have a ticket, they have to be in the groups of four, and our traditional student sections for fall sports will, will not occur. So, I just wanted to be clear on that point, since I know we've had some of our seniors reach out to me, asking what we're gonna do about that. So, any other questions or feedback on sports?
I was just gonna say, now that you brought it up, I think we're gonna have to be creative, but I think it would be really neat if, if the band is willing, you know, but I think it'd be really neat to have them play in Strongsville during the away games.
Yeah, we're working on that, and, and I, you know, we come, Denny and I have been from the philosophy where there's a will, there's a way. We'll, we'll, if it, you know, if it requires me calling him on a cell phone, "Play now", soon as the halftime hits, but we would really like, again, we want them to have as many games as, as they possibly can participate in. So, that's, we're heading there to try to do it, and that, the nice thing about that, that's the whole band at halftime, because they're the only ones there, which would be nice.
I think that's a great idea, and, you know, with the box cast, which we stream our board meetings on, we have the capability to do that at the stadium, or it's pretty portable, so keep on working on it, it's great.
We will, definitely.
Nice job.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
So, I wanna talk now about moving on from sports. I wanna talk about what does our responsible restart plan look like, and what is the criteria we will follow if the Board of Health rescinds its recommendations, or based upon my recommendations and the board's discussion of that recommendation, whether we feel that it's time to move on beyond the Board of Health recommendation at some point in time. And so, we brought this up, I think, two meetings ago, so I wanted to bring it back up. So, again, this would be, this is not what we're going with now, we're following the Remote Learning 2.0 Board of Health recommendation, but should that be rescinded, or I recommend, and the board concurs, that we move away from that, this is what we would follow. So, we've simplified some of our graphics, at least that was the attempt, to try and provide some clarity. So, we know it's very definitive when, when the county, this is Cuyahoga County, if Cuyahoga, Cuyahoga County is in Level One, Two, or Four, there's very, very specific actions we're gonna take. So, Level One would be, and Level Two would be the same, it would be in-person, in-building, learning, all day for all kids. And then Level Four is purple, that's the most severe level, right? If you look at the description, it's basically shelter-in-place, stay-at-home. That would be Remote Learning 2.0, that's what we're doing now, and that would be for, for five days a week. And a couple notes there, we talked about this last time, but a little bit, but what we're saying is, we don't wanna move in and out of these every day, every week. We know the county levels change on a Thursday. We would give at least one week notice to our families to let them know, "Hey, in one week, we're gonna change to this different learning framework," and we would stay in that learning framework for a minimum of two weeks, unless something happens that immediate action needs to be taken. So, you know, a, as we kinda look forward and plan, one week notice, we would be in the learning framework for at least two weeks. And at Level Four, we've already said, that's gonna be remote, but I also wanted to put the caveat in there that at Level One and Two, we may need to implement remote learning for a classroom or school due to COVID prevalence or spread, and/or the availability of substitute teaching staff. So, I just wanted to share that that's still an option that we would need to exercise based on the circumstances in the building. In terms of red, this is where we had a lot of discussion, we talked about different metrics, different charts, some of the data, you know, has, has changed, you know, we had stuff on, you know, what is the prevalence or spread within our students, and then the Board of Health says, "Well, we, we probably are gonna diagnose based on symptoms, not on tests." So, that kind of changed things, and, and we reflected, and we looked at, how can we simplify it? So, I wanted to be clear that this is, when Strongsville is red, because the county is red, it leads us, that's what the arrow's representing, it leads us into this graphic, and what we're saying is, when, when the county or Strongsville is red, we wanna look at our four borders. We wanna look at Berea and Middleburg Heights, which is one school district, we wanna look at North Royalton, and then we wanna look at our, our two neighboring counties. So, we know if Strongsville's in the red, that Berea, Middleburg Heights, and North Royalton, they're gonna be in the red, right? So, that's where you see, if you see, we'll just look at delivery option one, that those two are in the red. And then we would look at Lorraine and Medina County, which are, are on our southern and western borders, and so we would see what color they are. And so, if we look at this down the column and look at delivery option one, that says if Strongsville and our other Cuyahoga County neighbors are in red, but Lorraine and Medina are in orange or yellow, that for pre-K to five, we'd have our kids coming in every day, right? We talked about, we have small, smaller cohorts together, they stick together, smaller numbers, numbers, there's less movement, we feel comfortable, even if we're red, if our, two of our neighbors are orange or yellow, that they could go in-person, in-building every day. In six to 12, because of, we're, we've kicked it up from three to 500 kids to 1,200 to 2,000 kids, kids are switching classes, larger buildings that we feel it's in the best interest of our students, that we would be in blended learning. That's basically 50% of our students attending every other day. If we go to delivery option two, it would stay the same for Cuyahoga County that, but what that means is one of our neighbors in Loraine or Medina is red. So if you look at the map, right, we're orange right now, right? But Loraine County is red, Medina County is orange. So if we bump up and add one of our additional neighbors to red, we would say the entire district would be in blended learning. And if we looked in Cuyahoga County, Medina and Loraine were all in red, that says there's a lot of prevalence, a lot of spread, even if we're red, we would institute remote learning 2.0. So based on where we started, that's what I'm suggesting. We look at our, we look at where Strongsville is to start. This would lead us to this graphic, we'd look at our borders, and depending on how many of our surrounding borders are in red, would depend our, our learning, the learning framework. We would still use the methodology of we'd give a one week notice, we'd stay in that for at least two weeks, based on where they are. And the one other caveat that I would say is that, and put on the note is the district may allow pre K to two to remain for in-person, in-building, learning while in delivery option two. So as we prioritize our youngest learners, that may be something that based on factors that we may consider. So those are the two graphs that I'm recommending that we follow to make our decisions in yellow, orange, red, or purple. And so I turn it over to Mr. Miko and the board for any questions or feedback.
We would implement this only if or when the county lifted its current guidelines. Is that what I'm understanding? And we are still in red?
Yes, we. When we're in red, the county lifts its guidelines. Or there is the option if the board says, hey, Cameron, we think the county's being ultra-conservative, it's mid, late September and all the data looks, looks good, we would have the ability to say, we're going to move past that recommendation.
Thank you.
For the, the last point you made about the district may allow pre K to two to remain in delivery option two, that is specifically because of the level of learning they're at, but also because of the precautions and the distance or anything that they're able to take at that time, is that correct?
Yeah, we would be, if it was just pre K to two, we would be able to social distance to the maximum amount. We would be able to, and then prioritize our youngest learners for that because we understand that our, our teachers have done a phenomenal job preparing, but when you're just learning the basic foundational skills, it's difficult in remote learning. So that's what we would do, yes.
My, my only comment is, is I'm in, I'm in support of the, of the plan. At the end of the day, just like sports, just like everything else, we are trying to balance what we know is, is the best delivery of education for our stu, our students with, are there serious and real risks? And, you know, if, if, all of us have been studying this and, and modifying it, so we're very versed with it, but if you look at it from the first pass, it can be confusing. Again, the goal is to allow us to have some judgment that if, you know, if we're getting one level of red, does that mean we're in remote? Because at the end of the day, that remote has consequences, we all know that. So it's just a way to allow us to have some judgment and to be reasonable. And, you know, I think we've all said, we, we need to get started and then we'll see what happens. And, but this is, I, I'm generally in support of it. I think it's a, a good way forward to balance both of those needs. Any other questions or comments? And we don't need to vote on it.
No, you do not.
Again, this, you have your consensus and anybody watching from home can understand that this is the decision going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. The next update I wanted to give was in terms of transportation. So this would be when we, in, in remote, obviously, the transportation is not a concern for the number of students coming to school. In blended, it's not a concern because we're transporting 50% of the kids each day. This would be when we're back up five days a week, all kids coming. We've set the requirement that we would have no more than 44 students per bus because that's two students per seat, and those students would be wearing masks. So what we did is we took a look at, and I know it may be a little, I'll send this presentation out to our community, if not tomorrow, over the weekend. But what we did is we took a look at the school. We, and at the bottom, it's St. Joseph and John. We, we transport to a lot of, a variety of non-public schools that qualify, but there's such small numbers and they're inclusive in other routes. So that, the first column is the school, the second column is the allocated routes. How many bus routes are, are going to each of those schools? If you do the math, allocated routes times 44 students per route gets you that maximum ridership for the 2020, 21 school year. So that means for Chapman, we can transport 308 students maximum, and you can go down the list and see. And so what we did is we took our routing software. Right now, we bus students pre K to 12, one mile limit. You know, any student that lives one mile or out, we call them non-bussing streets that are within that range that we don't transport to. But we looked at it and said, how many kids would be eligible for transportation if we had, kept it at the one mile limit, bumped it up to one and a quarter, one and a half or two miles? So as you can see here, highlighted by the green, is that every building, except Chapman and the high school, are able to keep transportation at the one mile limit. So Kinzner is the example, they have up to 528 available seats on their routes, there's 441 students that would be transported, transported from, from Kinzner. And the same pattern holds true. When we talk about, so when we talk about the middle school, so for example, someone may look at this chart and say, you have about 1,900 seats available and you're only transporting a little over 1,100 students at the middle school. That's where you have to factor in a lot of the parochial schools. So you have to add in the 462 students from St. Joseph and John because they ride in the morning with our middle schools, students. In the afternoon, we have other parochial routes that come to the middle school, they call it the roundup. They come to the middle school, the parochial students get off the bus, they get on another bus and they get taken home. So there's a lot of parochial students that are filtered in, so that number is, is more accurate or closer to the maximum ridership. The, so the only two areas that we need to take a look at is Chapman Elementary School. So Chapman Elementary School can only fit 308 students. 347 would be required at the one mile limit, which means we would, would possibly need to make the decision of going up to one and a quarter to get close, or 1.5 miles. But at this point, what I'm recommending is that we keep it at the one mile limit. We add an opt-in. When you look at all the Chapman parents that opted in for transportation, only 184 said that they were going to utilize transportation services. So obviously maybe a little more, but we're going to work with our Chapman families to reassess them one more time to make sure that we, you know, because we're close, that we can get all of our kids within the one mile limit. And if we feel confident we could do that, we will keep it at the one mile limit. But I just wanted to clarify for the board and the community that at this point, we're not looking at changing any of the transportation limits. The high school, I know that looks like a big number, right? We say we could fit 704 students and at one mile, there's 1,800 students that are there. So I've asked Steve Brechner to come up and talk a little bit about how we routed the high school for this year and, and why we still feel that we can transport at a one mile limit. Steve?
Sure. So I think it was the, it was the spring of 2019, during exam week, we started looking at something called zone busing. What we had noticed was that ridership at the high school was trending down, of course, because people start driving. We had expanded with the junior lot, the amount of students that could drive to the high school. And also, if you look at the numbers of what was at the high school, even when I came to the district nine years ago versus what it is now, it is down, just numbers of students. So with all that, with College Credit Plus, of course, taking hold, we had fewer students using high school transportation. So from the spring of 2019, every exam week, we did zone busing. And we had a lot of positives with it, but the only criticism that we had to speak of, other than I just don't like it, which came at some point, was we didn't like the fact that it was one stop during the rest of the year and then one stop during that week. But what we found was when we would go from 36 bus routes at the high school to a greatly reduced amount during exam week, we were still able to bus all of the students to the high school. So then we started looking at bus numbers last year. We started having drivers just count the number of heads that were on the seats at high school and report that number over a week's time period. What we started to see was that we were not at capacity at all on our high school buses. In some cases, we were even into the teens. And please remember, these buses are designed pre-COVID to hold 72 people in, in those buses. Now, is that unrealistic in some cases? Yes, with high school, it is, but you can still trend into the 50s. And we were running some buses, full fuel with a, a bus driver on routes that were as low as 10, low as 12. So we decided to see what we could do with zone busing, not being the exception, but being the rule. We had to increase the amount of buses that were going out because we also had to factor into the exam week, seniors are gone, juniors are gone, a lot of your sophomores are already gone. So it's not a true factor. That's why we kept counting the number of people on the, on the bus throughout the school year. Lori Sinick and her assistant transportation director, it was Erica, now it's Curtis, were evaluating, and what they came and settled on was a number of 16. So what they've done, just like we did during exam week, was separate the district into zones. At no point in time does a student walk anywhere over a mile to get to that zone, not even close. So instead of maybe being right in front of your house or at that street corner, as a high school student, you're walking to the, another street corner. But we separated everything into zones and what we've been able to do is go from 36 routes that were not full whatsoever, and we were way overstaffed on the high school routes, to what we have now zone busing, where it does give us the flexibility to, if we need, add an additional route here or there. And also it gives us increased amounts where we could allocate some of those resources to some of our higher needs, i.e. elementary and preschool as well. So we're able to add some routes in there because we were able to take some routes away from the high school.
And so Steve, in terms of that number, even though there, because of parking and the expanded parking and students driving, even though we have a high eligibility limit based on the data that you've taken, 704 students riding the high school buses, that should be plenty to meet the needs at the high school?
Yes.
Any questions for me or Steve on transportation?
I have a question. How many students at the high school did we have opt-in for transportation?
I didn't hear.
How many students at the high school did we have opt-in for transportation?
I don't have that number with me right now.
I, I have it, I'll have to look, I can look.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can get that. Thank you, Steve. So I wanted to update the board in terms of the governor's directive based on the federal guidelines to address face shield usage. So if you've been paying attention, we, the board adopted a policy, the governor said now it's required for K to 12. The CDC came out and said, we recommend against using face shields as a substitute. The Ohio Department of Health followed that guidance and they're prohibiting the schoolwide use of fails, face shields as a substitute. So here's what this means. Face shields are no longer an either or. It's not, hey, do you like face masks or do you like face shields? Pick what you feel more comfortable with. They're clarifying that that's not the intent. The intent is if you can't wear a face mask based on one of these exemptions, then you can wear a face shield. And so face shields can be worn in lieu of face masks, and I've listed them there. If there's a medical condition, mental health or disability, that would prohibit facial covering, communicating with somebody who's hearing impaired or has another disability. The next one is just for staff, basically for instructional purposes, whether it's, you know, foreign language, working with English learners, you know, primary grades, trying to teach phonics. This would be something where a face shield would be appropriate, or based on religious reasons. So we have an exemption form that we'll share with our families and with our staff. So again, you have to look at, there are reasons in the face mask policy where you don't have to wear a face mask, and then you would go to a face shield. But we need to, we want to be clear that, that face shields are not just an option because they're more comfortable or it's a preference. So we'll update our parents in that communication, share with them the exemption form, they would submit that to their building principal if they feel they qualify under one of those reasons. All right, so the, I, I believe it's the last thing that I wanted to share as a part of the, the restart plan is I want to give kind of an overview, a flavor of what remote learning 2.0 is going to look like over the next few weeks at each of our levels. So preschool today, they held kind of a, a drive-through, meet and greet for new families and students that had new teachers with the preschool staff, our, our special education aides and our intervention specialists and teachers. So that happened today. For the week of the 24th, now we have to remember, these are our youngest, youngest learners, you know, three, four and five-year-old students. So we want to start off and, and get them accustomed to remote learning. So for this upcoming week, every morning they will get online, they will have a live morning meeting with their classroom teacher, then they'll go into a, a live specials class each day. And then the, the students will be provided with asynchronous work. So they'll be given some, you know, pre-academic activities, you know, get-to-know-you activities, things that are applicable to preschoolers to continue and phase in and get them used to being online. For the week of August 31st, students will follow the remote learning 2.0 schedule that's been put out, that has, you know, the three 20-minute blocks that are in there and specials. It's been communicated by our, our special education coordinator at the preschool, Mrs. Serso, through her newsletters. And then one of the questions we, we've gotten quite a bit is, how does my child log on to these Google meets, right? So when we talk about live synchronous instruction, it's all going to happen through Google meets as a district, and we've talked about, every teacher in the district is going to have a Google Classroom page. Once the teacher shares the Google Classroom page with the children, the Google meets are embedded in there. So it's not like you have to go and look for all these different links. You go to one spot, right? You go to the teacher's Google Classroom page, you get logged on there, and then the Google meets will be in there. They'll say, click here for our Google meet, and then you, you log on and, and you get it there. This, this same bullet point is in every, every level. The one thing that, you know, we've gotten some feedback on, you know, my, my child, you know, has only heard from, at the secondary level, three or four of their teachers. What the teachers are doing is they're finalizing their Google Classroom page, and by tomorrow, by the end of the day, they will share that with all of their students. What they're trying to avoid is as they put the finishing touches on building these pages, if they share it with the students first, every time they make an update, it sends an email to the student. So instead of these notices getting lost in 90 messages that, hey, you know, Mrs. so-and-so or Mrs. so-and-so updated the page, updated the page, they're waiting till the Google Classroom page is finalized, they'll share it. So it is, you know, if, if, if your child, our high school parents, you know, got three or four of them, it's because the other teachers are still putting the finishing touches on, but that will be the one-stop shop and, and that's where you'll get your Google Classroom links. So everything will be ready to go coming up by the end of the day tomorrow. So that's preschool. For elementary school, tomorrow, all of our teachers and our building principals will be sharing, every teacher has done a welcome and an orientation video of, hi, I'm your teacher this year, let's take a look around my classroom, here's some of the things we're going to do. So you will get those videos sent out by the teacher to the students, as well as should be linked to the principal's newsletter. For the week of the 24th, because again, these are our younger learners and there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done K to five, parents should have already received a, a link to sign up for an appointment. So it'll either be individual or a small group depending on the age. But what they're going to work on is they're going to come in, they're going to set up a time about, I think they're hour blocks that they've set up. You're going to come to the building, parents are welcome to come to the building, you're going to go, you're going to meet your teacher, right? We want to build that relationship. This isn't the spring where you knew your teacher, you're going to come in, meet your teacher, get to introduce, get to know him or her. If your child is in K to three, they're going to do Ames Web testing, that's our diagnostic testing in reading and math, there'll be some assessments that they'll need to take that can't be recreated in remote, we have to do them in person. They're going to get all of their stuff, they're going to get their workbooks, their Chromebooks, all the materials that they need. And then the teacher's going to do a, a, a brief training tips, you know, here's how we log on to the Chromebook, here's what it's going to look like, here's where you go to get to Google Classroom. So we make sure students are ready for success. So that's going to happen with every one of our elementary students and their families starting next week. So we also have to understand to get this started up, all of our teachers are going to be doing this all day, they can't be live, online. They can't be live online. So what they're going to be sharing, and this will be shared either tomorrow or Monday at the latest, they'll be sharing asynchronous work to address many of those traditional back-to-school activities. So there's going to be a combination of academic, as well as get-to-know-you activities, and those will be shared, as I said, on Monday. And for some of our families that don't have technology, you're not going to need technology to complete this work. And then on the week of August thirty-first, we will be live with the remote learning schedule that's been shared by the building principal. And that work that was done during the first week will be followed up on and be a part of the discussions. And again, the Google meets will be a part of the Google Classroom. You know, I know, you know, I talked to our elementary principals, who I'm very proud of all of our principals and the work that they've done. But, you know, we've been focused on this for months. And sometimes we communicate in a way, in lingo, that makes sense to us, but doesn't make sense to parents. So we've asked our principals to really put on that lens of, share it in a way that is information that parents need right now. There's some stuff that we want to share that maybe is better a week or two from now when we're up and running. But, you know, all of our families, if you're still confused or you still have questions, first of all, understand that it's normal to be confused. It's a whole different way to do school. But reach out to your building principal, reach out to your teacher, and then they will share the specifics with you. But the overall, the times may change based on the building and specials. But the overall idea is that you will have an English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies and Science block, three instructional blocks. There will be a part of that that will be live direct instruction, and then we'll go to small group and work from there, as well as specials, as well as intervention enrichment, and just kind of a, hey, we're here to help period as needed. So continue to reach out, you know, the more frequently that we hear this and see it, the more that we're going to get accustomed to it. And I always believe that you got to experience it, right? You got to go through it, you got to experience and see it. I know we may have anxiety or uncertainty, and I empathize with our families that have many kids at different levels or even the same level, trying to plan their schedule out. But we're here to help with you. Email us, communicate with us. We'll get you the information you need, and then we'll continue to work with you throughout. At the middle school, and they had today, they had pickup day for schedules and Chromebooks and textbooks and materials. So they use both sides of their parking lot that started today, that will go on tomorrow. And the teams were present to get to know and see, put a face with a name. So starting on Monday, they will start live with the remote learning schedule. It will be a modified class period schedule. Half of the schedule, based on the specific periods, will be on day, or Group A or Day A, and Day B will be the other half, and that will start on Monday. And so at eight-fifty or eight-fifty-five, whatever the time is, all students should be logged into first period at the middle school, based on whatever their class is on their schedule. And the Google meets is the same idea. That will be in the Google Classroom pages that are there. The high school is very similar, but individual schedules for the high school are available online. Kids could go on there and see those now. Tomorrow, Bill will have the high school going for freshmen and college credit-plus students to receive their Chromebooks and textbooks, materials. And then students in tenth through twelfth grade, they'll get all of their materials the following Friday. And also, all the work that's being planned for tenth through twelfth grade, it is not dependent on technology. So students will be able to, I'm sorry, they have the technology, they have the Chromebooks already. It's not contingent on the textbooks or materials. It'll all be online resources that they will be using. They'll be up and running again, the schedule that they have for Group A or Day A and Day B. That will be going as of August twenty-fourth. Bill's communicated that. I know Jessica at the middle school, she's done voice calls to parents. So we're trying all ways to say, check your email. We're communicating with you so you can be ready to go for the first day of school there. So that gives a highlight of kind of where we're at, when, where we're moving as we start the beginning weeks of the school year. Any questions or thoughts from the board on that?
So just to be clear, because I think the one thing, if I put myself in a parent's shoes, if they don't know what's going to happen Monday morning, they should send an email to their teacher or the principal. And if they don't know who their teacher is, they should email the principal.
Correct. And, you know, the easier of the two is middle school and high school. They should know who their teachers are, and the schedule is very clear. It's first period at this time. But yes, if there's confusion or you're unsure, or, you know, I have college credit plus or I'm Polaris, absolutely, reach out, principal and teacher, and we will get you the information you need.
The only, you know, the only, and being the technology geek, it's real easy for emails to get lost. And you don't, just like in the mail, you know, with paper mail, you don't know that you didn't get the email. You don't know that it's lost in spam, or it wasn't delivered for whatever reason. So if anybody is at home, you know, what the heck's going to happen on Monday? Reach out to the teacher or the principal.
Absolutely.
Because I think that, ultimately, I think we can get, we can get to the next step. But you got to be, you know, everybody wants to know what's going to happen on Monday. And, you know, I think it's fair to reiterate, assume best intention, and a little bit of courtesy goes a long way, and we'll get through it and we'll work through it.
I have another question. For those that are doing solo, have they been given the same kind of instructions on how to begin? Or where is that process?
So we are working with our online providers. They've been provided with the student information to be uploaded, and then that will work. Erin and her department, and as well as the provider. So we are still working on timelines with them to see where they're at with the upload. So that hasn't gone out specifically to our solo parents, but we'll give them an update by the end of the week as well.
And the same question, if solo parents, are they contacting Erin?
Yes. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Well, I think that finally gets to the end of the restart update for this meeting. We do have one item under my agenda for you to vote on. I shared this with the board last time. There has not been any changes to that plan. Again, this is due tomorrow to the Ohio Department of Education to share our plan for remote learning. So be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the remote learning plan for the upcoming school year be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion passes.
Moving on, let Steve Brechner, our operations manager, come up for the business service report. Steve?
All right, a few items in my section of the report here. The first one, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the security service contract addendum with Ally Universal for services at the high school, and the rates are there. The rate structure will be effective beginning August nineteenth, 2020. All services will be paid out of the parking lot fee revenues from the high school '18 fund.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Steve, to be, not to be overly simplified, obviously, if we're remote two-point-oh, we're not using this gentleman or gentlewoman until we're in person.
Yep.
Any other questions? Mr. Onagastu?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
The second one is for the copier and printer maintenance agreement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the operations manager be authorized to renew the agreement with Merit Tech for the service and supply program for the district's copiers and printers. This agreement is to be effective for one year, September fourth, 2020, through September third, 2021. The cost will be based on the monthly meter program, and that's Exhibit D. Number three, the purchase of district copiers from the Permanent Improvement Fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of two copiers from Merit Tech for district publication at a total cost of fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, funding to be from the Permanent Improvement Fund, and that's Exhibit E.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Steve, can, in a short description, why is it wiser for us to buy these versus lease them?
Leasing is going to cost the district more money. With the events of the end of last year, we were able to recoup a lot of our costs with printing and copying when no one's in the school to print or copy. Those prices drastically decreased. So we were able to roll over some of that money that was not last year. And again, this is coming out of the Permanent Improvement Fund, so that money rolls. We were able to roll that into the five-year plan and have purchased this equipment. On a side note, the equipment that's replacing is twelve to thirteen years old. We can't even get parts for them anymore. We have used them and abused them. That's time to send them to the happy copy hunting ground and get some new ones in that are going to serve the district well.
And then piggybacking off of the monthly meter program, is that bearing fruit? I know you brought that to us a few years ago to help control our copy costs.
Yeah, the Paper Cut program, we've been monitoring. Unfortunately, since we've got, I don't have a full year's worth of data. When we purchased it, it was a little ways into the year, the first year. And then, of course, last year, the data would be completely skewed because we didn't have March, April, or May that was of any statistical relevance. So I do know, though, that we were trending down last year. And then, of course, we trended way down in March, April, and May, from the previous March, April, and May. So I know it's not Paper Cut, but we'll claim it.
Any other questions for Steve? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion passes.
There's also some gifts that need to be mentioned. The Lincoln Electric Company donated twelve pairs of leather welding gloves, valued at one hundred and forty-nine dollars and four cents, to Strongsville High School to be used by students in the welding course. And also, the Progressive Insurance Foundation donated one hundred and twenty-two dollars to Surar Elementary School as part of Progressive's matching gift program. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Now, we have no items on our curriculum for this meeting. We have two under student services. Under D-one, be it resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into agreement with Applewood Centers, operating an educational institution known as the Gerson School for placement of students with disabilities for the 2020-21 school year at a cost of forty-one thousand dollars per student, as found in Exhibit F. Under D-two, be it resolved upon my recommendation that the Board enters into agreement with Monarch School of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau for the Special Education and Related Services for placement of a student with disabilities for the upcoming school year in the amount of eighty-one thousand, ninety dollars in Exhibit G. If there's no questions on that report, I'll turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Jenny Palko, with the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E-one, resignation of a non-certificated staff member. Under E-two, appointments for certificated staff members. Appointments for non-certificated staff member. Appointments for certificated substitutes. And appointments for non-certificated substitutes. An appointment for a certificated athletic supplemental contract. Under E-three, changes in status for a non-certificated staff member. Under E-four, salary upgrades for certificated staff members. Under E-five, stipends for our teacher-based team coaches. And under E-five, stipends for our webmasters. Under E-six, medical leaves for certificated staff. And finally, under E-seven, unpaid leaves for a certificated staff. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Jenny, would you do your addendum?
Yes, I do have an addendum. I'm happy to say that we're almost, we are fully staffed for the year, so we have some extras here. Under E-one, we have resignations for a non-certificated staff. Resignation for a certificated supplemental contract. Under E-two, appointments for certificated staff. Appointments for certificated substitutes. Appointments for certificated supplemental contracts, prorated. Appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts. Appointment for certificated supplemental contracts for additional time. Appointment for home instruction tutors. Under E-three, change in status for a non-certificated staff. Under E-five, stipend for our webmaster. Under E-six, medical leaves for a certificated staff and medical leaves for a non-certificated staff. And under E-seven, unpaid leave for a certificated staff member and unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff members. That concludes my report.
And we do not have any items under technology for tonight, so that concludes my report.
Jenny, I have a question actually about the webmasters. Are they the ones that are actually helping the teachers build their Google Classrooms as well? Or are they specifically just working on the schools, individual schools' websites?
Yes, so they mainly work on the school's website, making sure everything's updated, all updated information, sometimes the calendars they put in there, pictures on their website, and making sure everything's current.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Congratulations on being almost fully staffed.
Yes.
Has to be a stress relief.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Next is report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell?
Yes, as the district is working on their restart plan, so is Polaris. If you have specific questions, you can go to their website. They have a very flashy red little, looks like a warning label across the top, and you can click that and get any information you need. But a couple of basic updates, they're looking to start their school year Tuesday, September eighth, 2020, using a blended learning model, and that will vary based on class and instructor. So you will be getting specifics from your instructor shortly, if you have not already gotten them. And then juniors on that day will report from eight a.m. until ten-thirty, and then seniors from noon until two-thirty. So they're kind of staggering things. They also have adjusted their transportation a little bit to deal with the fact that a lot of their districts, the fee districts, aren't in school right now. So that can be found as well on their website. The only other thing specifically to note is that they have continued their adult learning programs all summer long with the adjustments that they needed to make in order to work on safety and keep their students safe and healthy, as well as their instructors. They have done that, they have done that successfully. So I think that if you are a parent of a Polaris student, you can be confident that they will be safe and healthy when they return there in a blended structure. That concludes my report.
And I have to say, that's probably the best report I've heard in the last five years. It was a great job. Report on legislation is myself and Sheri. I'll start. I'm sure many of you saw in the news that Larry Householder was removed or voted out as Speaker of the House. And on July thirtieth, Robert or Bob Cupp was elected as the new Speaker of the House, which I think is a good sign for everyone in education. Bob Cupp has been working for a number of years, addressing education funding. So hopefully, having him in that role will bear fruit in the years to come. Governor DeWine announced that he is going to be requesting a one-point-five-billion-dollar refund from the Bureau of Workers' Comp to businesses, et cetera. I'm not exactly clear if that request is also going to be to public entities, but one-point-five billion to our businesses during the pandemic will be important. And then the last one is the governor, along with Dolly Parton's book project. They are signing on with that. So if you go to theOhioImaginationLibrary.org, you can sign up to be part of that program and receive a book once a month. And I think there are at least three people in the audience who should get home as soon as possible and sign up for that book program. Sheri?
Okay. I just want to mention that the State Board passed a resolution condemning racism and promoting equity and issued a statement that in part stated that it strongly recommends that all Ohio districts begin a reflection and internal examination of their own involving teachers, parents, students, and community, and to examine curriculum, hiring practices, discipline strategies, suspensions and expulsions, classroom resources, including textbooks and professional development. I know Dr. Reiba initiated Diversity Council prior to COVID and prior to the current racial unrest, and he welcomed parents and employees of the district to discuss diversity. I was there at that initial meeting, and it was to, we discussed issues of diversity in the school district and... in the school district, and we were able to gather feedback, and it was very informative and actually fun. It's more like a workshop. It was well attended, and Cameron was able to develop a framework, I think, to build upon. So we, since we're becoming a more diverse community, I thought that was welcomed. I want to thank Cameron for designing that and initiating that diversity council, for being proactive and encouraging tolerance and embracing our growing diversity. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is board liaison reports. Why don't we start with city council?
Yes, I was able to attend the city council meeting in July. They actually had two meetings. They, the mayor and council appointed Kim A. Vares to fill the current vacancy and unexpired term of Robert Powell as a member of the city's planning commission. They also passed a resolution to add an additional 2.5 mil tax levy for our fire department, and that will be on the ballot November 3rd. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I don't know if the Strongsville Education Foundation met.
Actually, they did have a Zoom call last Thursday afternoon. Everything is still on hold with there not being a school. There's no field trips, there's no in-person fundraising planned, but they will be sending out their annual appeal shortly. And that concludes that report.
PTA council? Sheri, do you have a report?
Well, I guess the PTA presidents met today, was it? And they're gearing up for the new, the start of the new year. They met virtually, and they will start meeting virtually again starting in September. And, oh, also, that the high school PTA, they, as a gift to the teachers, 200 high school staff members and teachers provided hand, small hand sanitizer, bottles of hand sanitizer, and a little note of encouragement, welcoming them to the new school year. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Sheri. And student achievement?
Decide to get them back in school so we can highlight them.
So we can start doing some student achievement.
Yes.
Great report. Very concise.
That concludes my report.
Board committee reports, let's see. Finance committee has not had a meeting, and it is to be announced. Policy committee, our next meeting is to be announced. We do have board policies for second reading. Facilities committee, the next meeting is September 24th at 6:30 PM in this, in these offices in the admin buildings. Any other updates, Sheri or Laura? Come to the meeting for an exciting time. And the business advisory committee, next meeting is to be announced. Any other committee reports or comments? Next on our agenda is consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar means that all items appearing in the agenda with an asterisk are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests otherwise. Do I have any requests? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? We did not have any adjustments or corrections, so it all is as it stands, including the addendum. Mr. Onagostu?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion passes. Next is board policy, second reading. We should have all had the policies and had them for review. At our next meeting, they will be up for adoption, so if there are any final last-minute issues, please send myself or Cameron the information. Next, because we haven't talked enough, is superintendent's timely information.
All right, so just a few updates. We know the first day of school is coming out. Dan, even though it's going to be at home, he has started a tradition a handful of years ago about your sharing on social media with the tag hashtag Mustangs First Day. I believe there's the signs that are on the website right there, or we will get those out there. So please take your pictures at home. And as somebody asked me on one of the community conversations, there is no dress code for remote learning. So make it appropriate, but take your pictures and share.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, no problem. As Sheri shared, we do have a diversity council. We've had a steering committee that's been meeting over the summertime, and the full group is going to meet virtually on Tuesday, August 25th at 6:00 PM. So there is no membership for the full diversity council. It's whoever's interested to come in and join. We're using the list of the people, of 150 or so people that said they were interested last year. We've had a few new people we've added. So if you're interested, just email me, we'll add you to the list, and when you can make it, you can make it, and we'd appreciate your insight. This went out, again, talking about emails that may be lost in spam or other aspects. Meal distribution, so we are still required and still providing food services throughout remote learning. That will start next week. This is for all students, so this is for students that are full pay, students that get reduced lunches or students that get free lunches. Don't forget, parents that are eligible for free or reduced lunches, you need to fill out the appropriate form for each school year. Dan sent out an email from Strongsville City Schools from Chef Mike earlier this week. I told you to click on a few links there, but those will get you those forms. But we are going to be distributing food at each school this year on Wednesdays and Fridays from 11:30 to 1:00 PM. And so what we need parents to do is we actually need you to let us know that you're coming so we can prepare accordingly, right? So there's going to be weekly emails on Mondays and a form to request food. So the deadline is 8:00 PM on Monday if you want to pick up your food on Wednesday, and 8:00 PM on Wednesday for the Friday pickup. So we're actually going to pick up food tomorrow. So that's the first pickup day, and when you pick up your food on Friday, you get food for Monday, Tuesday, and breakfast for Wednesday. And when you pick up your food on Wednesday, you're going to get lunch and then all day Thursday and Friday. So, you know, there's details in there. If you are a paying family, you can use your PayForIt. It's got a new name, George, doesn't it now? PaySchools?
Yeah, it's PaySchools.
PaySchools?
Same company, they just upgraded their platform.
Okay, so PaySchools, you can do that online. They'll have the point-of-sale system outside. You just punch in your code and you're good to go. You can use cash or check if you would like, but we encourage everybody to use the online system if you could.
And it's the same, not to confuse anyone, it's the same platform we used last year. So it changed over the prior school year.
So Dave and his department has done a phenomenal job. We pushed out a new tech support website to our staff, and did it go out to parents yet, Dave? Tonight, so I knew it was coming up soon, but I know you guys want to spend more time with me tonight and hear me talk. So in that spirit, it's a wonderful website that he's developed in collaboration with his department staff. But I just want to share real quick, we've shared it with staff, but parents, so you'll get this, click on, you can click around, but click on the parent link. And I think what is pretty slick here is this is your one-stop shop to help you understand all of the tech that we're using. So what Dave created, because it can become overwhelming, right? So what Dave created is kind of this color-coded system. So if I want to say, okay, you know, Cameron, you've talked a lot about Google Classroom, I don't even know what that is or how to help my child, remember it's in the blue row. You know, Google Meet, we talked about that, it's in the green. So just as an example, if Google Classroom is in the blue row, I'm going to click on this blue tab, and I'm going to go here to Google Classroom, and here's a whole bunch of links that I could click on, quick videos, quick informational resources that I can go to as a parent or a student to learn how to log in, to learn how you can look at assignments, navigate. So again, if you go to this main page, you can go and see exactly what's on there and what you have resources to, and then in all the links, you can actually get videos and tutorials of how to help support your student at home, or your student can watch those. And so that is the timely information for this week, Mr. Miko.
How did you get to that? I missed that.
So it's just on the slide, but Dave's going to send it out to all parents tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm assuming it'll be on the tech homepage? So if you don't get the email, you can just go to Strongnet.org and go to the technology page and find the link there. Any other timely information?
That's it.
Next is Board of Education other. Anybody have any Board of Education others? I will just share, you know, we are, we're starting school, we're starting remote. That is our first step, that is not where we want to stay, but we do need to balance health and safety with bringing the kids back into school, and we will do that. I am, I think we are all happy that Cuyahoga County is in orange, and that's a step in the right direction, and we hope that continues. We hope it gets to be yellow. But I do, speaking for myself, this is my opinion, I do think we're in a phase, and we're going to be in that phase, where we're going to have to learn how to live with this coronavirus, this COVID-19. And I firmly believe that whatever things we as a society, we as a community are going to have to learn and adjust, one of the best places to learn those things is in school. And the different things that our students are going to have to learn, whether it be masks, whether it be physical distancing, all of those kinds of things, school is where we're going to learn those new ways of daily living or getting through things. But like I said, everything that we read in the news, I don't, it doesn't seem like there's going to be a vaccine that is just going to magically make everything disappear. It seems like it's going to be more like the flu. And every year, there'll be some adjustments, and we'll learn to work through that. So with that said, I have the Cuyahoga County Board of Health FAQ from their recommendation, and they talked about the average number of daily cases, and those are going down. They talked about hospital activity, and that's going down. They talked about a high percentage of non-congregate settings, and that continues to go down. They talked about the number of cases, and when these recommendations came out, it's always that per 1,000 population number, and we were over 100. We were well over 100 in Cuyahoga County. Today, we're under 100. That number continues to go down. They talked about the, it's a tortured phrase, the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, but that color coding. And when the recommendation for remote came out, we were red, and it didn't look like that was going to change for a while, and we are now orange. It's coming down. Positivity rate, I'm curious, I'll be watching the press conference tomorrow. I'm curious to see what Cuyahoga County's positivity rate is, because for the state of Ohio, it's now 3.8%. And a little while ago, New York, which obviously we all know dealt with COVID in a way that most other places didn't, they're now down to 1%. But we're down to 3.8. Hopefully, Cuyahoga County is down. And then the other, the one concern the county health department had was that capacity to test, and specifically testing students, but capacity to test in general. And they indicated it's a national problem, and I don't see that, personally, I don't see that going away. And so if all the other indicators continue to go down, and, you know, we see that the next three or four weeks, I think as a board, we'll be discussing what our next steps are. Prior to COVID, we would always discuss, should we go back to school before Labor Day or after Labor Day? And hopefully, that trend will continue, and we can have some further discussions right around Labor Day and look at what is best and most wise for our students in Strongsville. So I don't, you know, ultimately, it's going to come down to what the numbers are going to show, and it's also going to come down to what our experience in Strongsville is. We're going to get started, we're doing some experiments with sports, we're going to see whether we can do that successfully, and as long as we all are on the same page, I'm confident we can get back to where we want to be, which is having our students in school with their teachers. And that's really all I had to say. Any other others? Hearing none, meeting notification. Our next meeting is September 3rd at 7:00 PM in this building, and then September 17th at 7:00 PM in this building. And I will announce that our October 8th meeting, we have adjusted that, and that will be October 1st. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee and to review negotiations with public employees concerning their terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Onagostu?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes. We will enter executive session at 8:50. We have no intention of further business. I will thank all, everyone for their attention, and have a great weekend and have a great start to the school year. Thank you very much.